Good morning, welcome to the Audit Committee meeting for Tuesday, June the 9th. I'm Connie Malier, the Chairman of this committee, and I'm calling the committee meeting to order. And let's start with, with an invocation. Please bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you for this beautiful spring day, and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Thank you for everything you do for us and help us as we make decisions this morning that affects our neighbors and the citizens of this county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us to be sure our actions are based on truth and fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance by unchallenged, sovereign, public.
Having a quorum up here with me this morning, and I'd like to, to ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Gentlemen, have you had time to review those minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. And our agenda for this morning for the Audit Committee, are there any changes to the Audit Committee agenda?
Not in my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Being none. Let's hear from, from Rick Evans. John, are y'all here? All right, let's do it.
My first time here with social distancing. I like the new arrangement. I appreciate the hand sanitizer. It's really, really good to see everyone in person. Since the last time we were together, of course, everyone knows that the stay-at-home order resulted in several county offices temporarily closing, and also much of our staff worked from home during that, that time as well. Even though that posed challenges, with a tremendous amount of cooperation from county's staff, with a little hard work, we are able to deliver to you two completed internal audit reports today. The internal audit of the Tax Commissioner, Tax Commissioner's Office, and also the Juvenile Court. So I'll go ahead and jump in to the Tax Commissioner's report, if you'd like to follow along with your copies. We, we performed several procedures and found no exceptions in those procedures. We observed petty cash counts. We observed the change fund and the vault procedures, internal controls surrounding the vault. We also tested daily cash collection procedures, online payments. We analyzed and tested refunds for overpayments. We also tested cash remittance procedures for taxes collected and remitted to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education, cities of Harlem and Grove Town, with no exceptions. We also went over the procedures for outdated tag decals and what they call dead tags. That's when you turn in tag. Tags are not reissued. They're actually recycled. We went over those procedures as well. We also took a look at what we would describe as briefcase, briefcase procedures. That's the way that things are transferred securely between Grove Town and Evans with the cooperation of the Sheriff's Department. We also audited several bank reconciliations, noting no exceptions there either. Purchase requisitions, purchase cards, time sheets, these are the standard procedures we perform in every department. We found no exceptions in any of that testing. We also examined millage rates. We reconciled the approved millage rates to those that were entered into the electronic system and ultimately charged to property owners, and found no exceptions there. We made several inquiries and observations that were necessary to develop an understanding of the operations of the Tax Commissioner's Office, and noted no issues there. Are there any questions about the report on the Tax Commissioner's Office?
Didn't find anything wrong to write up. That was about the most boring report I've read in a long time.
Well, you know, a few years ago, we, there were some things that were found in the Tax Commissioner's Office. I think it's good news that everything seems to be going smoothly there. This would be the second time that we have been in the Tax Commissioner's Office since Wayne Bridges was elected. Shortly after he came in, he asked that we come in and give him a, a clean slate to start with. We did that at that time. That was three years ago now. And so we've come back around and, and found that things are still going well at the Tax Commissioner's Office. It is a fairly long report still, and, and a good read, if you would like to get an understanding of how that office functions, I would recommend that you, or maybe if you're having a hard time sleeping, okay, I admit, I don't, I don't really produce the best.
Only us nerdy accountants do that kind of reading. Is Wayne here this morning, Mr. Bridges, with us? Good job to Wayne and his, and his staff.
Yeah, especially, there's a gentleman, Peter Tong, was a tremendous help to us. He seems to be doing an excellent job, really sharp guy. So the second report that I have for you is also going to be boring. We, we visited the Juvenile Court. Also, these things come around on a rotation, and it was, it was time to visit the Juvenile Court. But there was, there was limited fiscal activity going on there, and so it's a little bit of a shorter report. We did look at the cash deposits and transfer procedures. So there's only one bank account at the Juvenile Court, and it's really maintained by the Finance Department. There's really no cash handling in the Juvenile Court. Fees are collected by the Clerk of Court, submitted, deposited on behalf of the Juvenile Court. But we did obtain bank reconciliations, tested deposits over several months, and found no We've performed sub-recipient monitoring procedures. So the Juvenile Court receives a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or CJCC, and during the period of time that we were covering, they received two of those grants, one for 2019 and one for 2020. The grant requires that the Juvenile Court submit quarterly reimbursement requests for approval, and we, we obtained these requests, analyzed them, looked at the supporting documentation, and noted that they were approved by the CJCC, and everything seemed appropriate there. We also looked at a selection of their purchase requisitions, their purchase cards and time sheets, which are the standard procedures that we do in all the departments that we analyze, and did not find any exceptions. Questions about Juvenile Courts?
No.
Very good. Have one more item for us?
Well, just some quick updates. So last time we met, we presented the results of our analysis of the lodging tax, the hotel and motel access tax. We immediately, after that, after that meeting and the discussion that came from that, immediately began another, a new analysis, and we have continued to, I actually have a list of hotels here that we've been working on. Pardon me for just one second. Currently looking at the Jameson Inn, the Red Roof Inn, America's Best Value Inn, and Hyatt Place. The, we're continuing to analyze the ones that have been less responsive in the past, and continuing to look for patterns in, in remittance of that excise tax. In addition to that, we are beginning the internal audit of the Engineering Services Division. In the last few days, we've begun submitting requests for that, and going forward, we're looking at the Magistrate Court and Probate Court also on that same three-year rotation. And perhaps after the, the election, we'll, we plan to look at the Board of Elections, also on that rotation. I hope that the Engineering Service and the other two courts can be ready for the September presentation, and perhaps I can get the Board of Elections prepared for December this year. So that's just an update on our current status.
Do you think you might want to do Board of Elections between the primary and the general?
Well, I was thinking, that had occurred to me, but I may, it may be best to wait until after the November election, I mean.
Thank Glenn.
Yeah, so they're just, just to wait until after that, and, and.
Have somebody else you can audit instead in that period?
Yes. The, the, any, any member of this body, and certainly Scott, and can always contact me, and if, if there's a certain department that you would like to, for us to prioritize, basically I have a spreadsheet, and I, I look at, on this, this three-year rotation, generally speaking, and, and select somewhat randomly the departments, and that, and I just make sure, I'm trying to make sure I'm not missing anything, you know, nothing gets outside of that three-year window. But whenever there's a priority or a concern, I can always be contacted, and I will take a look at it.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for?
No questions.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any Commissioner comment, public comment for the Audit Committee? Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments for us? Very good, being, no further business for this committee, I'm going to, I'm going to close this committee meeting. We want to go directly into, y'all need a break, need a quick break? Let's have a, can we reconvene at 8:45? Very good, thank you. Good morning, I'm calling to order the June 9th Committee meeting for the Management and Internal Services Committee. We have already prayed and pledged. We have a quorum here on this committee, all three of us are here today. Gentlemen, you have seen the minutes of the previous meeting, do I have an acceptance of those?
Motion to.
Second.
So moved, our agenda is in front of us, but I do have deletion of item I-1D-3 Planters' Communication Dark Fiber Lease Agreement consolidation, we're taking that off the agenda. I understand we have no presentations for this committee this morning, and nothing on the consent agenda. The debate agenda, let's start with Mr. Johnson, you have some items.
I'll take that one. First item we have your consideration is the United Healthcare Product Renewal for Year 2021. Our staff and HR has done a great job, again, of working with our healthcare provider, United Healthcare. We do see an increase this year in the administrative service rates, it's seven and a half percent over our 2020 rates. The stop loss is going to remain the same, we, we talked about that, and think that's in our best interest to let that remain the same. We are still getting the rebates that we've been getting, which is substantial, at $800,000 plus annually. You can see that the, the overall rate increase per employee on this side is about $7, pretty close to $7. And the total amount of the fees that we're talking about for the 2021 year is $87,284, based on the number of covered employees that we have, that could fluctuate just a little bit. I want to be clear that, that this is not a rate increase. We have put a rate increase into the budget, and that is there because we are going to have to go up on our insurance. So we are looking at rate increases, this is independent of that, this is just the administrative fees that goes to our carrier, United Healthcare. With that, staff recommends renewing the medical contract with United Healthcare for 2021, and then authorizing the chairman to sign the documents necessary to execute that agreement.
Is there a reason they're separate, the fee versus the insurance, my experience?
The administrative fee is just something we negotiate, it's just another fee that we pay, it's just something we negotiate with them every year, and there are many years where administrative fee have, has gone up, but the rates have not, or vice versa. But we, we do them independently.
What I was saying is I'm used to them being together with the insurance, the, the one package, my experience.
I mean, it, it really, it really is one package, I mean, other than, I guess with, United Healthcare is our carrier, and paying the administrative cost is, is, is one piece of it, but we are self-insured, so how we decide we want to do those ra, although we work through them, how we decide we want to adjust our rates is really up to us. Do you agree, Elizabeth?
Moved to accept.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next item you have is our Cigna, Cigna Insurance Group, this is our employee spouse and dependent voluntary life, short and long-term disability products that we have. We were able to have a successful negotiation with Cigna, and they are actually going to hold our rates with no increase. Again, thanks very much to Elizabeth McBurney and the folks over in HR that do a great job of doing this every year. We're responsible for the employee independent life product, which equates to about a little over $40,000, $40,423 annually. The remaining benefits that we have are 100% employee paid. So we did execute the original agreement with Cigna, 2017, for an initial term and, of two years and three one-year renewal options. This is the second renewal, and we have one additional year term remaining that we can discuss when that time comes. Staff recommends exercising the second renewal option to Cigna benefit products with no rate increases to the employees for an additional 12-month term, beginning on January 1st, 2021, ending November 31st, 2021.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
The next we have is our Employee Assistance Program. This is a contract renewal. You'll see that we entered into a new agreement with them on March 20, March 20, 2018, which included a rate decrease from previous years, and that rate decrease came along with a five-year rate guarantee, so we're still at that rate. The initial term was July 1st, 2018, through the June 30th of 2019. We had four one-year renewals, this is the second renewal of this piece too. So with that, staff recommends renewing Employee Assistance Program agreement for one-year term, July 1st, 2020, through June 30, 2021, with the same terms and conditions as the original agreement.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. Kennedy?
Um, the next item for your consideration is acceptance of the FY 29. Already received the, the grant in the count of 37. Your hour match is. Staff recommends approval and acceptance of the 29. Request the chairman's signature.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
I'm going to talk about the next two items tied together, but the next two items for your consideration, disaster debris, RFPs, they're pre-arranged contract vehicles between county and service providers for providing faster debris management, second one, disaster debris monitoring service. EMA and GEMA require that these contracts be up pre-event in order to qualify for reimbursement. Last time we had to activate. But in order to determine a cost, oh, I got a commission, question that, dollars, that's, that's a fictitious, that was assigned, number that was determined by a predetermined scenario. I did those.
And so that scenario was given, so you could compare apples to apples?
He gave that to them.
Okay.
That's how we determine. So in this first one, this is disaster debris RFP, it actually provides for the heavy, actual Seven responses were received, finalist series, environmental, top pick, series has been our current, 2008, satisfied with continuing. Staff recommends awarding RFP to.
Moved to consent. Question?
Second.
Just, and I asked you yesterday, but to make sure this gets us in a position, if, if we had a disaster, it puts us in a better position to start to clean up than someone that is not in that position, is that correct?
Does it, it not only guarantees us the contracted for, but without it, have a hard time getting. That's not a position. We may never use it.
Right.
Costs us nothing, but it's a contract that's on the table.
So if, if there are no disasters, we don't pay a penny?
Right.
We have a motion in a second, so moved, so there's a second part to this?
It's the next one. Next item is faster debris monitoring service. So the way this works, you have to have one recovery, the actual work. The three responses were received, response to that RFP, resubmissions, debris check out as the top pick. Now, in the past, we had been trying, check, really a toss-up, technical ability. So we went, we did go back to Series who's actually worked, and asked them, but they said yes, they had worked with all three, and.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved. From Kennedy, do you have any other items in your section? Oh, you have inter, internal services as well.
Ms. Reese?
Oh, okay.
First item I have for you is an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Harlem that wishes a 2015 Dodge Charger that we have purchased. We have agreed a price of $2,500, which is the price we have used. Staff recommends that we be free to sell this Dodge Charger to Harlem.
Moved to consent.
Second, with a question. Now with the drivers track, most of them to be tracked, or we will, will be.
That we've already pulled back, and I know, got said we've already pulled back, and.
We have a motion in a second, so moved, next.
Next item I have for you is an RFP for countywide copier services. Did receive two proposals, one from Pollock, who is our existing contractor, and the other from Siscale Business Equipment. After reviewing both proposals, staff is recommending that we stay with Pollock, and in fact, their proposal includes lower rates than what we're currently paying, as you can see here on the recommendation sheet. So staff recommends approval of a contract with Pollock for two years with three.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
The next item is a request to transfer some funds from the General Fund to the Fleet Replacement Fund. You'll, you know that the Fleet Replacement Fund is an internal services fund that will budget for vehicles, whether they're replacements. The Sheriff's Office participates in the fund, however, the emergency equipment they purchase for the vehicle is budgeted for the department. Because of the COVID-19 situation, some of these vehicles will not be received. So we are asking that the funding for the emergency equipment, $8,000, be transferred from the General Fund, Placement Fund, or the equipment.
Moved to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Next item is renewal of our property and liability insurance. This will be for July 1, 2020, or 30, 2020. Net contribution did increase by 4.7%, $1,100,000. However, that was less than the program average increase of 7.2% because of the fact that we have an extra safety program. Did dividend credit of $51,561 as part of this renewal. Staff recommends approval of the renewal with. recommends approval of the renewal with authorization for Chairman to sign.
Second with a question?
Second.
Took my memory a little bit. They see, included in this, will be accepting this or...
It'll be?
November or whenever.
The Performing Arts Center wants, wants to take possession of it yet?
A kind of rating increase.
I wouldn't think it would be.
I was just wondering with the cost of the building or the value of the building as long some?
All right, we have a motion in a second. So moved. Next?
The next item I have for you is renewal of our cybersecurity. Tried to get this additional protection last year because ACCG covers $50,000. Purchased a separate policy that has a limit of $2 million. So staff is recommending approval of the renewal of this with AIG Specialty Risk Protector, and it's in the amount of $28,557.
How many different quotes did we get? Did we, did we bid it out or we just renewed Have a motion in a second. So moved. Next?
Next item I have for you is an intergovernmental agreement with Lincoln County for the purchase of 2015 Dodge Chargers in the amount of $2,500 each. So the total will be $5,000. Staff recommends...
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Ms. Reese, do you have any other items for us today?
I do not.
Technology services, Ms. Blanchard?
Item I have for you is the purchase of a new... Changed things a little bit at the end of the day. Traffic engineering. Firewall fits right. What we've seen with firewall, obviously, valuable. Happened over time. Obviously, replacement of that. Firewall is being purchased. Cost is $128. Our funds in the existing traffic engineering.
How long will this last? Will we give a new one every two or three years or...
Oh, ma'am, the firewalls are very... This one, we're buying it so good. Times the number of...
There a yearly maintenance fee from Cisco or Presidio that goes with this?
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Next?
Next item I've got is the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Obviously, you've heard of Microsoft Cycle and... $5,030 and seventy-eight. Budget approval.
You have to pay it all upfront or do you piece it out over contract?
$175,000 number is per year. So this...
Desktops, do we? How many desktops and, and units are we talking about? No, no, that's, I'm, it's, okay, that explains.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Item I, one D three has been removed from the agenda. Let's move down to the dark fiber.
IRU with the company with the local office. Dark fiber just over, less startup types. Also, pop and have a rack. Ask Connecticut. Let's them do it. Total revenue, $1,011 and forty.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Ms. Blanchard, do you have any other items for us this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Driver, do you have any legal items? Thank you. Staff reports, county manager, personnel savings.
First item we have for you is just our savings to the general fund through personnel savings. See that those have now exceeded a million dollars, a million fifty-five thousand, $256. Budget goal was far exceeded and you can continue to monitor that next year. We had a similar number for our budget for, for next year, but I would imagine we'll exceed that.
But we use that money to pay for the overtime pay or the...
We did. We did use that money to, because of the COVID issues, we were able to do that without dipping into the general fund or without going into the, I'm sorry, fund balance. We were able to use those salary savings. And now it appears, I was on a conference call yesterday with ACCG in the governor's office, it appears that we may be reimbursed for that money, so we may get majority of that money back and we'll put that into fund balance.
Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
That's all I have.
First report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report, month of May. Hard to believe Here again. Operating around ninety-two. Some of the major funds are operating well.
Emma, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Last update.
Yes, the next report is the sales tax update, and I believe that for the month of April, our payment was actually over $2 million. This comes at an annualized percentage increase of five percent or than the same month.
And last year we had masters, and this year we did not.
Had everybody sitting home spending their...
That is fantastic. We had sales tax on all the internet sales. We'd have been...
That, that was another conversation we had yesterday. It just happened that it hit in April, but when the internet sales tax was approved, the start date for collecting that was April 1. So I would dare to say that since that carried us through the month of April without having a masters, we should start seeing some significant increase in our sales tax now that the internet sales tax is being collected. April 1st was the first time we collected.
Well, that's interesting because I saw an article, state was down 10%.
They are.
Fantastic news. How about the investment report?
Yes, the final report is the investment report, just for your...
Have any questions on those reports?
Not.
Good. Do you have any comments in general? Have any public comments related? Up so we can see.
Stand up, stand up.
There you go.
Stand up.
Congratulations. He was hiding back there in the corner. Very good. And I do not see that we have any public comment for the Management and Internal Services Committee. In no further business for this committee, we'll adjourn. What time would you like to come back? You ready to get right into it?
Right into it soon as they make a couple of changes.
Right. Give us two minutes and then we'll come back to the next one.
For the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for June 9th. Question and pledge already presented. We'll move right down. We have a forum. Calling good with, can I get an approval of the...
Approval?
Second.
So moved. Johnson, are we good on the agenda? Okay, thank you. We do have one request to speak. If you would like to come forward, Doc, and give us your name and address. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ravi Jarath. I live in Westlake, 3543 Westlake Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Mr. Brooks Brumenthal got a information that there was a meeting regarding Bowens Pond Dam plans to be made, and we had some, he, he was busy and he had to go out of town, so he asked me to come. Some of you know he's the president of Westlake Development Property Owners Association, about thousand, thousand homes over there. And he and I have been talking, and there are a few other people, Mr. Pottle here and several others, we have been going over the issues at the Bowens Pond. We are glad that something is being done about the dam. I, I, I don't know exactly what the plan is to do over there. I would imagine it is to hold the water back and allow this big 28-acre pond to be used as a retention pond, so there's less flooding, which we have been experiencing. And also, this pond is very important for the Westlake Country Club, where we have 700 members. They get the water supply from this pond, and otherwise it'll cost them about $10,000 a month to get city supply of the water. Then they, they move the water from the pond and use it for their golf course. And I've been in, I play golf and I meet with Brett, their, their manager, and I've been hearing that without this water, they will most likely go under, which would be quite a problem for, you know, you can imagine for the Westlake area. So I had another engineer look at this issue with Bowens Pond. There are several components of that, but I don't want to go in detail. One of them, of course, is the dam. The other one is the sediment, which has increased a lot. And third is the, the other issues with the plants and poisonous plants in there and stormwater, of course, in the homes. And, and the more the sediment comes down, the more that is stormed in, in adjoining areas and the residents there. I will be able to send this report from Pace Engineering, which is a company out of Massachusetts. What they do is environmental engineering. I just wanted their estimate and see what we could do. And one of the very important things they have sent, which is not very costly, and I like everybody to consider that, is a placement of what we called in-street sediment, debris, water or oil removal, preventable re-reposition of Bowens Pond. What it, what it basically is, a 15 by 15 by 23 feet unit that is placed between the entry of the water into the pond and it holds the sediment. He thinks that based on all this water that comes and the sediment that comes, we, we could prevent the pond to get any worse. Because this unit, one or two units, will keep the sediment from coming down. And then every three to six months, the trucks can take it off. And it'll again be able to fill up again and with rainwater and be, be removed. That will allow, allow the, the pond to stay intact. So I, I don't... So, I don't know which firm is doing the dam engineering project. I like Mr. Brook Brumenthal and other representatives of Stevens Point. There are about 500 homes there, all are affected by this, that we could set up a meeting with the, with the stormwater managers and executives, and also with the, hopefully with the engineering firm, who can look at the placement of these units, so that there is no more, no more of the soil coming through. Dredging is, I understand, is a bigger project, which can be handled later, but at this point, at least we will stop any more, any more damage to that area. That's.
Can you give a copy of whatever that is to Matt?
Yes.
Is he familiar with that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. According to the agenda, Mark, take that, but.
Thank you.
A quick update on Mr. Billy and how things are going, please.
Certainly, his rehabilitation is going very well. Surgery was successful to, I think they've done some good for him. But with him yesterday, he sounded great. He's got a great attitude. Low with guests still restricted. Turns in, but he is steadily making progress. Has a great outlook, so.
Good. Let him know that we asked about him, and I was very concerned the last time he was in here, I tell you.
Yes, sir, I was too. I was, had a front row seat to all of that urging, but his power was wrong and he was. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, the first item that I have for your consideration is going to be an encroachment agreement with Georgia Power. We do have plans to extend a 12-inch water line, Gateway, part as it's back to Wrightsboro Road, crossings on that.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, move.
Thank you. The second item we have on the agenda for your consideration is a green project in one of our original buildings that got built on our campus in our district, called the B C, which has lasted a decent amount of time, but due to the added wear of what, you know, the nature of our business, it's worn pretty heavily, and we did budget $25,000 for the replacement of the B C. Kind of mirror of what we've done at one of the treatment. Like it's wearing very well and it's doing a good job. Low bid or the low quote was Augusta Florida, it came in at $24,219. It is an item. Staff recommends.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, move. A light on us today, sir.
A gray light? Yes, sir.
Going down to engineering, Kyle, welcome, welcome.
We'll call you out if you do.
Out here to back me up. The first item we have is.
And they completely understand that if something happens down the road, it's too bad. Second.
Here we go. The, the next item is proposed safety lighting at Columbia Road and Stowe Drive. Staff received a request to evaluate the need of safety lighting at the intersection. From our evaluation of the intersection, at least three of the six criteria were met. Only one is required to install safety lighting. Howard, they submitted all the light operating costs, dollars and upfront cost total of 300. Approval.
Second.
So, move. Russell, are your neighbors using the road? I mean, that was a big deal. So, it's helped the neighborhood. Glad we got that behind us. Thank you. Item?
Similarly, Traffic Engineering received a request to evaluate the need for safety lighting at the intersection of the road and King Bridge Road. From the evaluation of the intersection, two of the six criteria were met. Traffic Engineering reached out to Georgia Power, and they said to install the light on an existing distribution pole, annual operating cost of $244. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, move.
The, the next item is for the acceptance of right-of-way on Wrightsboro Road through the intersection of Gateway Boulevard. The last commission meeting, rezoning for that parcel, since that's been approved and the board of property owner has agreed to donate the property for the, the Wrightsboro Road improvements for that. Staff recommends acceptance of the right-of-way on Wrightsboro Road. Plaid for Stevens.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, move. Matt, I was out that way last night, and like everything's a little bit lower than subdivision. In my mind, red light and all, and turn lane was going to help the landing, but it's well below that where that's going to come out. Is that correct?
Thanks, Lee. Tells me it's got a left turn lane for Brigadier.
Yes, it was dark and all, but it just seemed like it was a good bit, like Gateway was coming out, that it was well below that. Item?
The, the next item is the acceptance of pond and easement for River Birch Landing. Request acceptance of improvements in River Birch Landing located off River Birch Drive in Greer Circle. Said improvements for River Birch Landing, plot to include D along the access. Improvements specified and depicted on a plat prepared by agency. Staff recommends acceptance of improvement. Plot contingent upon staff's approval. Final plat in one.
Move to consent.
This is a easement, right?
So, this is the actual acceptance. So, this, this pond was a, not a wet pond, a pond that is behind Lewiston, actually Terms between the board of education and the developer for who maintained the pond, actually a settlement that was agreed to, education as well as the developer and the board of committee. Part of that agreement was if they did everything to bring that pond back into current standards, a standard that they would, county, we would accept it and we would. Does have water from a neighborhood, from county roads, that to commission, acceptance of everything was met. Project for long time.
Second.
So, move.
The, the next item we have is the acceptance of improvements for River Oaks, 1A Lot 30 easement, plat. This is acceptance of improvements, improvements of River Oaks form water system along with the easement. Plat prepared by Jockins. Acceptance of lot 30 easement, plat. A to D.
Move to consent.
Second.
So, move. All right, who? Matt, you have this, or Kyle, do you have this, or who? I think everybody get a stab at this one, so.
Yeah, we have here a contract, Princeton Engineering, on a study on the earth and concrete section of the dam, plot us options to repair or replace the structure. History of this, the pond was, 2003, 2003, county green space, 2010, A J and G, inspection of the dam while the pond was lowered. At inspection, they, they noticed, they did not give an opinion here, they just simply called. Did notice, thought there was some beaver burrows going through the dam, but they could not determine how deep into the dam. 2012, we had a firm come out with ground penetrating radar. That firm came back, again, the pond was lowered, access to the dam, did not find those, damn the way A J G thought happening. And was in, at that time, it did the perfect dam, but it, that is what. About nine, 10 months ago, I received a call that we had water ration going through the dam. We said, out there, they got there, they did in fact find where water was. Appears to that and stopped that, but at that point, we realized we need to have it studied thoroughly this time. Action, out there, we need to get on that concrete part of the dam. Concrete tested for more life. Basically, this is a plan for, had a lot of opinions. I will in the future.
A fixed price?
Contract is a fixed price.
Oh, right. I'm with you, I'm with you.
All right, all right. I know none of us, probably in this room, couple in this room, were here when this became a county problem or whatever, but just like River Birch, everything was brought up to standard before the county accepted it. Don't sound like this happened back in the, whenever the county accepted ownership or whatever of, of Bowens Pond. But in between those couple of studies, I think we invested from a county a lot of money from other work. Is that correct?
2010, 2011, we spent about a million dollars, 40,000 cubic yards of sediment out of the pond.
Now, we're looking at that same problem again also?
Yes, sir. Probably same, if not more.
Hey, this looks like a never-ending problem, and I really have some concerns, how we're going to address it, just from what I read, and this was, report was good. We don't know everything, because we haven't spent an additional $150,000 to get the recommendation, but it sounds like a lot of money is still out there to be spent for what needs to be done on the dam or whatever. To me, I have a, I have a real concern and a real problem with a money pit that we just can't ever seem to get our arms around. So, that's my thoughts, my questions. I'd love to open it up to y'all to see where you, y'all's, y'all are at and whatever, but.
Can I throw one item in?
Yes, sir.
Freshen, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, we're dealing with multiple issues here, obviously, and we're dealing with an issue of a pond that was deeded over to us that, that has its share of, of issues that need to be dealt with. Obviously, we had a speaker earlier talking about sediment. You know, the, the golf course has a perpetual easement over the, for the water rights of that, to be able to use the water. So, there are a lot of moving parts to this. The particular thing we're talking about here is, is the dam itself, and we have downstream assets. So, you know, this is right across from our treat, our sewage treatment plant. So, we, having a dam failure here could be potentially catastrophic, because our downstream assets are so close to, to that, where that failure would be. So, you know, we don't, we don't want the water washing out basins and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, that's going to be a big EPA issue if, if that happens. So, I agree with you 100%. I, I think, I think if we were looking to do this just to fix the dam for aesthetics for the pond, or make that be the first step, and then try to dredge it and those sort of things, but I don't think that's the recommendation here. I think what we're doing for this study is just to see the safety of this dam and to try to figure out what, just to make sure that we're okay downstream. It may be that it comes back, that it's a small fix, and again, I think from, from staff's perspective, and of course, I'll leave it to the engineers, but as the county manager, at this particular point, my only concern is protecting downstream assets. We, we have a green space property that's been silting up for years. We already know it costs us a million dollars to do 40,000 cubic yards. We have a lot more to do there. It's going to be millions and millions and millions of dollars that are unbudgeted. So, unless this board decides that you want to move into a direction to be able to do that, we have ponds all over the county, you know, that, that have the same sort of issues. You know, this is a situation, nobody wants to hear this, but this is a situation where it may be in everybody's best interest to, to take the dam out slowly and return it back to a creek. The people that bought on a pond, they don't want that, obviously. They, they want the, the pond, but I, I think this board may be in a position to, to give it back to the homeowners if they wanted it, and they could go in and make the repairs. But it's, it's just one of those things where I think it's, there's so much to be done. At this point, all we want to do is make sure that we have integrity of the dam and, and take care of the safety downstream.
I'm 100% on board with you. We cannot jeopardize our, our assets down the road, but as far as, I think we need to be open as a commission to looking at every option for, for, for everybody in the county, and not just some homeowners that live around the pond. And it says county green space that's actually not accessible, but from a handful of people in the county.
Restriction on that.
And to me, that, that is somewhat of an issue.
And I'd like to keep it open too, if, if what we decide to do is not accept, acceptable to those homeowners, that they have the option to take it back over the, the club, and the homeowners there have the option to, you know, we can deed it to them, sell it to them, whatever, so they have control over it and maintain it as they see fit.
We would certainly entertain that. As a staff, that would be up to the board.
Right, the, the issues are mutually exclusive. You have the dam, which needs to, have to have a dam, you have to have it repaired so that we don't blow out the water plant on the other side of the sewage plant. But then, so again, the sediment in the pond is one thing, the dam is another, and so we're just discussing the dam today.
That's, that's correct.
And obviously, it needs to be fixed, here that we don't ruin the.
Again, this is an assessment. We, we may get the assessment back, and it may not be, it may be a, a easier fix to protect our assets than we're thinking. We're not looking to putting, you know, good money after bad money. This is, this is a, a real engineering study to, to try to figure out exactly what we need to do to make sure that we protect our assets.
Yeah, I met with the club and the homeowners a couple of years ago, and you may have been in the meeting that I was in. And so, you have competing, mutual, you have competing priorities between, with, between the two at that time, because the, the only option I saw, and now we get the dam. Uh, because the, the only option I saw, and now, forget the dam, that's a separate subject, but the dredging, the only opportunity I saw was let it slowly drain, let it dry and you dig it out. We can do that. I don't say for next to nothing, but a fraction of the cost. But then the club says, "Well, we have to have water." But you have to choose. I don't see the county stepping in and spending five, six, seven million dollars to dredge it wet. It's, you let it drain or let it go back to a creek, let it drain or let it dry, dig it out, move it. And then, uh, let it fill back up. That was, but again, the club said, "Well, what about water? We have to have water." Somebody, you have to choose. That's the, the only option on the table that I see is letting it drain down to a creek, letting it dry, dig it out. That's a sediment issue, not the dam issue.
And it would take some time, but it'd be.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't take a week.
Probably two years to.
Right.
Try to the point we could dredge it out the way it would need to dredge out, so it wouldn't be.
And that's kind of a nasty fix too, to have a swamp in your backyard.
Be very swampy.
Does not smell pleasant.
Swampy for some time.
We could buy some earth friendly chemicals to.
Or breathe. And there's no good, no good solution to this. Um. So if we voted on this today, how long would it take to get the study done?
They'll have all their survey work done, their investigative stuff done, about forty-five days is what they told us. Actually go back and do all the analysis and come back. So we're, we're a couple of months. Having any kind of idea of what the repair.
And those are just the ideas, then you have to go figure out how to pay for the repairs. I mean, so we could be a year actually getting the repair done? Is there a? Is time of the essence in getting this done? Is the dam about to blow out today?
I don't think the dam's gonna blow out today. We just know we have issues. Need to start moving towards.
We have a year? Is that, I mean, is that even a, oh, how do you know how long?
I mean, based on what we've been out there, we have, our staff goes out there quite a bit. Made the repair to the one. Holding up well, we have other leaks. And we're looking at what surface this, oh, the surface is happening. Got divers, we have. Radar, we have, we have a lot of stuff in. Forty-five days to do the analysis, forty-five. Surveying, sixty days, so we're, we're talking. Out from them coming back to us with an idea of what needs to happen. Or how we get there. Back with that. I think we're, I think we have time to do that.
Can I ask a whatever question, question? Okay, uh, if we agree to this hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars study. Dam blows out. On the hook for the hundred and thirty-nine?
They would, wherever we stop work is where we stop.
Be built, it'd be built as it.
That's right.
As work's done and not a.
That's correct. It's broken down. Exactly where money is being. At 1A, had to stop. I mean, they might go out there in the first day, as we see a cavern, this standing. Figure out how to get to that point.
Move to consent.
We have all the information we need?
Um.
I can add some information for you, just for your information to know. Like the gentleman said earlier, there is a full-size six-inch connection for the golf course, though they're not totally dependent on the pond. We can't supply them. However, the cost probably exceed what they would like to pay for it, but they do have connections, so they can have the course survive with irrigation through Columbia County.
Governor stepped up scale to six-inch pipe and.
They have, they have used us and we have, uh, we've been connected to them for quite some time. I got a call from them last year, uh, interested in making sure that connection was viable again. We activated it because they did have it disconnected, want to, you know, continue the base fees on it. Uh, and since then, they've used it sparingly, but it has been utilized and it is available for their use.
And when they use large volumes of water, they pay the same amount per gallon that I do at my house because it's treated water?
That was my question. It's a stepped up scale. Our scale is a half inch, one inch.
Well, they're, they basically are not on the residential scale. They'd be built out like a business would.
Commercial.
They'd be commercial build, um, where you pay a base fee for the meter. Their meter size is quite large, it's a six-inch meter, and then they pay per thousand gallons beyond the base fee.
Relatively expensive.
Because the base fee with that, that large of a meter is substantial.
And it's treated water? It's clean, just like you would have.
It's treated water, yes, that's correct.
But no, no sewage would be on it?
No, sir.
Ms. Richardson, do we have enough information to move forward?
Uh, I guess we can move forward with the study.
Yeah.
I think.
Right, made a motion.
I think we have a. I'm gonna make a comment. I think we're gonna have a decision to make down the road. It's gonna be a tough decision, but I think we gonna have to make it sooner or later.
I'll second, uh, it was a motion to consent, is that correct? I'll second.
So move.
Item?
Okay, the last item we have is. Wrightsboro and Chamberlain. Wrightsboro and Chamberlain. Solicited votes for a million. Five hundred and fifty-nine.
How much time is left on completion of this project, Matt?
Um, we're making great progress with our. Agreement we have, they would provide us with all the equipment. Not have that yet. Actually gonna keep, actually, ob, our supply of signal equipment, project moving and air equipment. Us. This, this was a big. Been out there in a week. Last time I was out there, it looked really good.
It, it's coming, but it's, man, there's a lot, there's a lot happening there.
Eyes to plan. Right in the middle of the construction. Best for an additional crosswalk, which. As we get next.
Motion to consent.
Second.
So move. At least.
First one I have for you is the Grove Town Library change order, number three. This is a deductive change. Thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-six. Recommended.
Move to consent.
Now you make him get up here when he's asking for extra money and you getting money back and you told him to sit down. Well played, Matt. Second.
Move.
Oh, man, you're wrong.
This is, uh, um, two, two items for, uh, our design engineer for Martin S. Park, um, which, as you may know, Martin S. Park is, uh, adjacent to Blanchard Park. One of the items is for wetlands delineation for, uh, Southern Civil Solutions to determine if the creek that we're crossing is indeed wetlands or not. Um, the other item is for additional design services for some stormwater calculations. Um, we decided after about fifty percent of design, we wanted a full raised, uh, full raised asphalt curb edge along this area. Um, it is some steep terrain there, so we wanted to make sure we were protecting ourselves from any kind of erosion. Staff recommends additional, these two additional design items in a total amount of thirty-six fifty.
So this is just adding the raised curb?
This is.
That's basically all we're doing here?
Well, it's, it's the design of the raised curb and the calculations of storm. How he's gonna deal with the, this additional amount of water on the roadway.
So this is just the design?
Yes.
At it?
Design and the wetlands delineation.
All right, second.
So move.
The library open, Grove Town?
Pretty able.
So you in?
We, we're ready to go. The, the library's actually open, so they're doing curbside now. We, we've been avoiding, uh, ribbon cuts, so to speak, because of the whole COVID issue. They are operating slowly, so we'll, we'll open that up slowly and then get past this. We can have larger gatherings, we can have a little, little more of a formal opening.
But they are using it.
They're, they're using it for curbside today, yes, sir.
Right.
And limited access, I believe.
Mr. Driver, anything? Uh, staff reports?
Yes, sir. Half for your view are year-to-date budget reports, everything. Are. Are obviously. I've been used, I guess, during this, this. Questions?
Thomas?
No questions.
Have for your view, the ability construction projects, those in red are. Activity projects. Everything is moving forward. Have our work performance. Report for you as well. Matt, uh, you'll notice that our water production has, uh, increased quite heavily. From February, we've mo- more than doubled our production. Of course, our work logs have picked back up since.
And the folks who could not pay their water bill during the COVID crisis, are everybody back on track now?
Well, um, we're seeing a trend that. Customers that are, are used to not paying, not making an effort, those that aren't making an effort, of course, we paid late fees, uh, as well as we have engaged back into corruption of service if you're not paying your bill. Um, there's quite a few, we probably have a list large enough that we might not be able to get. Like, um, but the, uh, activation of late fees, I think, we'll probably have to come back into. Make any effort. Are trying to, best to. All those folks and work. That need. That their bills last a little longer and. That's of an impact on them on the month.
Without asking you to judge, you know, these people's pocketbooks and hearts, do you feel like most people are trying to stay on track or are they abusing it?
I think we will always have our abusers, always have the ones that are trying and those names are. Over there and I think. Again, going to try to be extra cooperative with them over the next month and then tighten up a little bit.
Uh, I have a question for you. What percentage of our meters are electronically or that, can we monitor electronically?
Yes, we're moving about five thousand meters. That's our goal to upgrade the older units, all new units that go in are of the flex net. Part of next year's budget is gonna. Include additional perimeter. Gather data and send back to the office, so we've still got to build infrastructure out in the field to gather that data. And we've got to continue on. We're probably on about a three-year track to get everything completed. Uh, we did complete early our. Think we're still out. At point forward, we'll be, uh, working. Customer portals and customer access to our information. Right direction.
Thank you for that. Uh, any commissioners or public comment? Or executive session items, so we will adjourn at nine thirty-four.